13th, 2023, regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. If we could all stand, face a flag, and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next up is roll call, please. Member Seer, here. Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
Member McManold?
Here.
And Chair McAlpine? Here. So we do have a quorum present for this evening's meeting, also in front of us, and we have received a copy of the agenda. For anyone else who might need one, there were some at the front, but if we could all review the agenda as it's presented, and then we do need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to approve as submitted.
Let's see. Lot seven, who support it? Would you, Krug? Okay. So we can just do a call vote for that. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented for this evening's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the agenda has been approved. Next up is the approval of our minutes from our meeting, which seems so long ago. It was August 15th, 2023. They were included in our packet, and at this time, if there are any revisions, corrections, or additions that need to be made, we can entertain those, and if not, we do need a motion to approve them as well.
Move to approve the minutes as submitted from August 15th, 2023.
I will support that. So we have a motion and a support on the table. We can do an all-call vote as well. All in favor of approving the minutes from our meeting on August 15th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There is no old business in front of us this evening, so we will move on to our first request. It's application PBA 0823. It's Hillen Homes, representing parcel 042517478029. It's on the north side of Columbia between Stanford and Woodward. They are requesting a dimensional variance for approximately eight feet and three-quarter inches on the west side, for the west side yard setback, and the distance that was required shall be 15 feet. If you could go ahead and just give us some background on their request, please.
Yes. Parcel 042517478029 dates back to at least 1934, when the western parcel 2517478028, which is 948 Columbia, that structure was built as a non-conforming. The current side yard setback requirements of a minimum of five feet, that parcel is only .94 feet, which is 11 feet, three, I'm sorry, 11 inches, 11.3 inches. This was originally, parcel number 478029 is the original plot at lot size of 40 feet by average depth of 119.10, and historically has been an undeveloped parcel. Applicant exceeds the total side yard setback requirements for 138-526 setback schedule of regulations, total of 15 feet. They, on the parcel 478029, with the proposed structure of an additional one foot on the west side yard where a minimum five foot is required, giving a total side yard setback of 16.01 on parcel 478029 on the proposed development site. The schedule of regulations, section 138-526 of the zoning ordinance requires that there shall be a distance of at least 15 feet between dwellings. Proposed development has 6.94 feet, resulting in the 8.06 foot variance request on the west side. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of section 138-606 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property, and the request at variance should be granted. Motions for approval and denial were included in your provided packets.
So do we have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Okay, if the petitioners here, if they could please come up to the microphone and state their name and address for the record, please, and then tell us a little bit about your request and why you would like us to grant the variance.
Property address or my address?
What?
Property address or my address? Your name and address?
Her address. Your address, corrects.
My name is Beth Ream. I live at 1829 Glenwood in Royal Oak. And I'd like to speak to you for some of this, if it's okay.
Oh, absolutely. No worries.
So I'm representing Hillen Homes today, requesting an eight-foot, three-quarter-inch variance on the west side lot of lot 131 Columbia. Two things that I think are important to mention. The sellers purchased this property almost 10 years ago, when they also bought the home right next door to it, that they still live in. The lot had a separate parcel ID and legal description at the time of their purchase. It's an original city lot. It's never been split. The sellers do share the west lot side, the west lot with their home and this lot, which is the side we're asking for the variance on. Look, I'm sorry.
And he appeared out of nowhere.
And if you use the formula, the city guidelines for maximum lot coverage, and reduce the footage by 420 square feet for a two-car garage, legitimately, the city would allow a 2,520 square foot home to be built on this lot. Hillen Homes is not trying to maximize out the lot coverage. What we're proposing is a 1,944 square foot colonial on this lot that would only be 24 foot wide on this 40-foot lot. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Does, we will go ahead, is there any question?
I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Quentin Foster. My address is 2086.
Can I, are you representing the petitioner?
No, I'm representing my sellers, actually.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yep, yep, apologize.
No, no, that's okay.
2086 Larkspur Lane, Grand Blank. So to reiterate what Beth just mentioned, just wanted to point out, sellers purchased the property as an investment property back in 2014. Since that time, they've maintained it, paid taxes along that, along those years, and they're just frankly excited for the opportunity for new construction to be utilized on that lot. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So we will go ahead and...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, that's, I was gonna say, if we have any questions?
You said they bought it as an investment property?
Correct, yep.
So is it, they're not living in it, then?
They live in the house next door to it.
There's a dwelling on the one parcel at the corner. So they, they live in the house that's next to the lot?
They would live in the house that's gonna be the closest to, on this side, that's gonna be the closest to.
Correct.
Okay. So are they selling it to someone they know, or just, they're just selling, building it and selling it?
They're just selling the lot as a whole.
Okay. To Hillen, and then they're gonna build. Got it, okay. Do we have any other questions for the petitioner?
So the seller, yeah, I guess, so they, somebody bought two lots, essentially. They bought two lots, built a house on one, and then are now wanna sell the other lot. Is that correct?
They didn't build the house.
The house was already existing.
Yeah.
House was existing?
Yes.
The original house on the one parcel.
They bought the house and bought the empty lot.
That was, well, and also, it dates back to the history, pretty much, these two parcels, because it's never been split or anything. This is the original plot at lots, both 028 and 029. The history shows that it's always pretty much been owned by the same, you know, different, when the house is sold, the lot is sold with it. So it's historically been the same owners for the house, and then the empty vacant lot to the, to the east, which is what they're looking to develop on.
So basically, I think what happened is the Hillens come to them and said, hey, there's an empty lot, we wanna build on it, can we buy it from you?
And I'm assuming in order for the sale to go through, you'd wanna get the property, the variance approved.
Yeah, because otherwise, it meets all the other setback requirements as far as lot size and such.
And all of the setbacks actually are met. It's the neighboring, it's the neighboring property that you can't get to 15 feet on one side.
Yeah, because the original house that was built in 1934, 948 Columbia, who is the owner of that vacant lot, that house in 1934 was built non-conforming, 11.3 inches from the lot line.
So the only way, the only way a house could ever be built there is to squeeze it another eight foot, take another eight feet out of the house.
A variance would, yeah, the only way, otherwise, it, yeah.
So based upon what they'd be, they're presenting, it would be, what, a 16-foot house? Because it's 24 with the, yeah.
Like 16-foot? Okay, I think I get it now.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, so at this time, I would like to open it up to the public, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this matter. If you could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what your thoughts are regarding this, this variance request.
My name's Craig Childers. I live at 877 Columbia Road. I did file a written as well, but I figured I would come in person. My concern is, and when I read the, the section, it's the seller, the person who lives at the home, it's their house that creates the issue that they want this to remedy, and the fact that you mentioned, this lot has remained vacant and enjoyed by the use of the homeowner living at 948 Columbia as long as I've lived in the, I've lived in that road. I've lived there since 2015. My wife and I bought that home. And it's, so they now, their home is too close to the dividing line, and they want this variance so that they can, this house can be built by not them, but by a home builder, presumably to sell it to someone else. And my concern is, one, for the enjoyment of everyone else on the street, will now cram a house into this small lot. I get that at some point in time, it was a valid city lot, but that was nearly 100 years ago, and, and we're all very much aware of the types of homes and size of homes that are currently being built in these new constructions, and I have concern, both from the aesthetic experience, but the biggest issue is, is that this lot, this vacant lot, has become, we joke, but it's, it's like a swamp. Anytime you get more than about a half inch of rain, it's flooding with water, to the point where the homeowners, they have like a pump that'll run to the street to drain water off, and I've lived in Berkeley long enough to know that standing water is a reality. My concern is by granting this variance, cramming a house onto the lot, putting a driveway, putting a garage, that water has to go someplace else. That will affect every neighbor immediately around it. That water will end up in the street, that water will continue to overwhelm the sewers, and we will have more backed-up basements on this street than we already have already, which is now becoming almost a yearly occurrence. And it's incredibly frustrating as homeowners, I, you know, I'm sympathetic, the infrastructure of Berkeley is old, you know, it is what it is, you know, that's incredible undertaking to revamp that, whether it's Oak Park, Berkeley, Royal Oak, all these communities. It is what it is, and that's where we bought, and that's where we live, and we have no intention of moving. The concern is that there are ways that we can keep it from getting any worse, and one of those ways is stopping cramming larger homes onto vacant land, where that land is actually providing an area for that water to go. That grass, that soil, that, that ground absorbs rainwater. That's just a fact of, of, of the way, you know, the ecology works. And by replacing that with concrete and a home and a driveway and a, you know, garage and all this, you're exacerbating the issue. The homeowner who bought the home 10 years ago still enjoys a significantly larger yard than I have or anyone else on this street. They continue to enjoy that. They have a trampoline there, and despite the fact that it is sometimes waterlogged, it's still a huge yard. It's a much bigger yard than anyone within blocks of where we live. If the homeowner wants to use it as an investment property, there's nothing stopping them from selling it as is. Hillen Homes, in, as much as this would be a detriment, they could tear down the existing home and build a larger home and make money off the property, and there's nothing we can do about it. But what we can do as a community is stop things like this, where we're halving the distance between two homes, and creating it as a negative to all of the other people that live on the street. And my concern is that, the reality is that, if I'm the existing homeowner, the second this variance grant is granted, and Hillen Homes buys it, I throw my house on the market because I don't wanna be eight feet next to the house next to me. I'm gonna get top dollar from my home in this housing market right now, before Hillen Homes has a chance to break ground in the spring, and, you know, every, who's, everyone's to the detriment apart from the person that just made a bunch of money, and Hillen, Hillen Homes doesn't, they're not Berkeley residents. Hillen Homes is out of Oxford, you know, and I actually have on authority that Hillen Homes has come afoul of zoning in other instances when they've built in other neighborhoods. I have personal knowledge of that, and so that's my concern, is that, I live on this street, my family lives on this street, there's lots of young children on the street, and we have people that are trying to live there, and this is a detriment. The ordinance, my reading of the ordinance, I don't believe that there can be facts as found by this board to support the granting of the variance. That's my opinion, and I would ask that the, the variance be denied.
Thank you. So your correspondence is one of them that we, that we received as well, so given that you're here, we do not need to read that into the record. Excuse me, is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to come up and speak? Okay, so we do have one more email that we received. It is from Josh and Alyssa Roman, who reside at 922 Columbia, and I will read into the record what they have, their, their feedback on this. "To whom it may concern, recently has come to our attention that there will be a new house constructed next door to our current home. With that being said, and after looking over the plans for the new home, it appears as though the new build will be conflicting with two city, two current city ordinances. The appeal put forth by the building requests a waiver for a variance less than 15 feet between two homes, but the building plans show that the additional structure, the garage, will be located five feet from the property. Under section 138-55, setback, second sentence, no accessory building or structure shall be located within five feet of the side lot line unless proper fire separation has been installed. In no instance shall an accessory building or structure be located closer than 18 inches to the side lot line. Also, see third sentence, no accessory building or structure shall be located within five feet to any rear lot line. In no instance shall an accessory building or structure be located with a dedicated easement or right-of-way, within a dedicated easement or right-of-way. Allowing the construction of the new home with the current plans of the detached garage not only would affect potential property value, it brings risk of fire unless proper fire separation has been installed. With the new construction also brings a new style of housing, disrupting the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. Berkeley would be losing its iconic feel of a small town with warm, welcoming people. I believe the construction of the new building would not only impose financial loss and equity for the homeowners nearby, but also bring safety issues to the table, causing unneeded risk and potential damage for nearby homeowners." And that was from Josh and Alyssa, Alyssa Roman. That does conclude all the correspondence we have received as well. So at this point, we will close that, the portion of the public hearing, I will open it for discussion, and we can deliberate on this request.
Excuse me, can I get a clarification on the garage five-foot? That's not included because there isn't a structure on the other lot?
Well, as far as what they're proposing, the, the garage and the proposed development is five feet from the rear lot line, which is permitted, and five feet from the, the eastern, the eastern side, which is permitted. So with the five-feet eastern side lot line, they don't have to have a firewall or anything. A garage on the side can be as close as 18 inches.
Okay.
So there's, there's no issue with the, the garage setbacks.
Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts? Mr. Willner?
I mean, I don't know, I'm struggling with the, you know, it was a city, it was a platted lot, like, wasn't split, so wasn't like somebody split the lot. And they are meeting the setbacks, however, the house on the one side is non-conforming, which creates the problem. I mean, they have, they have the proper setbacks on their side, it's the house that's non-conforming that was built in 1932 that is causing the issue. I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a tough, the lot, we'll never be able to build a house on there otherwise, you know, nobody's gonna build a house that's any smaller than that. And you could, you could do a one-hour fire rating on the entire easterly side, or the westerly side, I guess. So I, I don't know.
My primary concern is the last, the request of variance will not impact the surrounding properties. We have testimony of now two surrounding property owners who are speaking to the condition of the property as it sits today, and the concern about it moving forward, a concern that I know is not unique to Berkeley with proposed new builds or, you know, the use of, of lots that are currently vacant. I know we, I was on the other side of this issue, I think, last time in August, about vacant lot, but we didn't have the same concerns, it was more of a lot split, as you talked about, issue. I, I do tend to agree that the first four conditions look like they are met, but as we know, we need to check all five boxes before we can approve it, so I'd be curious what our people's thoughts are on that fifth condition.
Mr. Allen?
One of the things that frightens me, and if, you know, you've watched the development go on here over the last few years, but when you dig a basement, they get out, even with, you know, with the proper setbacks, that basement really spreads out, and I am terribly concerned, quite frankly, of going down to that small of a number, roughly eight feet, instead of 15 feet, you're gonna be digging right along a property line that could potentially cause big problems with the foundation of the existing house. And that frightens me a little bit, because we've seen it happen here. We don't need any more of it.
I mean, you probably have a two-foot overdig, or at, at most, maybe a three-foot, so yeah, you're gonna have, you'll be probably five feet, you would be five feet away from the other house, which I, I don't know that that would, you know, five feet of separation would impact, I don't think it would impact the neighboring foundation or house, but...
I said the same thing when they were building Harvard, Harvard Commons, and the entire, the entire eastern bank of that thing slid right in the hole.
So we always talk about how in situations like this, you know, approving one just leads to the next one because they're all non-conforming. So let's say we approved this, the people who own this end up selling their house, someone who buys that wants to tear down. So would they then need a variance to build a house? They would be okay?
They would be okay, because the, the vacant lot that's being proposed to be built on, they're meeting all their setback requirements of the 15-foot requirement that they have for their two sides. They're actually giving one foot additional rather than the minimum five foot on that western side, they're doing six feet, so that it would be less of a variance request.
So but, but couldn't, couldn't someone come, come up and say, well, we wanna use the same?
They would not be able to. If, if they tore the house down at 948 Columbia, they would have to follow current setback requirements, and they would have to have at least a minimum of the 10-foot then on that side.
I just, you know how they, they just kind of piggyback on?
Approved variances go with the property, not with the property.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know how we, we always say, okay, once you do one, it leads to the next, and next, and I just want, I just wanted to make sure that that was not gonna become an issue.
Someone item that I'm nervous about on it is this much of a variance, and what happens down the line is the next person that comes to us with the same type of variance, and then they're saying, hey, you gave this one here, and the next thing we know, we've got homes built eight feet apart, all going up in Berkeley.
We wouldn't give inches, right?
Right. It's, that's the part that makes me really nervous.
Yeah, I get that, however, they're meeting, they're meeting all of their, their setback. I mean, they're meeting the overall 15, they're exceeding the overall 15 that they're required to have for their property. However, the, the house that was built in 1930-something was built a foot closer to the property line, and it was okay at the time, I'm sure, and the house, someone could have built a house on that lot a foot, you know, the empty lot, someone could have built a house there, I would assume, back then, and it would have been acceptable then. I, I mean, it's not really something of their doing.
Right, they're building next to a non-conforming.
They're actually meeting all of their setback requirements. So it's the tough one.
Mr. Creel, ask about the fifth, I think it's the one about not adversely impacting the surrounding properties. And I think, I'm uncomfortable, I do believe it will impact it negatively, but is that our decision, I mean, it's more of a subjective thing than it is, as far as drainage, you know, digging the foundation, that kind of thing, it is more subjective and kind of projecting what could happen as opposed to what may happen, and I, I kind of think it is a negative to have them so close together.
Well, and to that point, is it really, should our decision be based upon the fact that there is one or 12? I mean, even if there is the thought of that, is that enough to say it doesn't meet that requirement, that we, you know, we're discussing things that could?
But there are houses that are closer than, that have less than 15 feet between the two of them, there are. I mean, this isn't, this wouldn't be the first one, there are several. We even given a loud one, because we, part of our stipulation was having to make sure it had a one-hour rating on that, they were closer than 15 feet. So this is, this wouldn't be the first instance where there's houses that are closer than 15 feet.
Yeah, but my concern is, and we have testimony now that it, the lot itself currently experiences issues that would cause harm to other, literally adjacent neighbors. We know these houses are built, you know, on an elevation, these new builds, and particularly it causes other issues. I have personal experience with that, from two neighbors down, I mean, my backyard floods because of the elevation created by necessary new, and we don't even know what the intentions are. I mean, this is a building company in front of us. It's not an individual, it's not a family, you know, no offense to the builders.
But they still have to meet all the, they would have to meet grading requirements and drainage requirements. I mean, that's not, because you're afraid of the water problem is really not, it shouldn't be even a factor, that's up to the city to, to tell them how they have to build it in order to meet drainage requirements.
Well, it certainly is a factor. We're talking about whether it impacts, adversely impacts surrounding properties. I don't know that we have evidence before us today to suggest that it wouldn't.
But the, I know, just with the codes now in Berkeley, they're pretty strict about the drainage and...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So we do have a residential grading ordinance, and it does require that the current way that the water flows has to remain that way, and if there's water that goes to that property, the water has to continue to go to that property. You cannot, under this new ordinance, sheet flow onto your adjacent neighbor's yard, and if that requires that you have to put in a drain or something like that in your backyard, then you have to do that. As far as whether grading and how drainage affects or currently exists in the neighborhood should impact this variance, it's not, you're trying to determine if the setback requests or the house distance request meets those, those criteria, that doesn't have anything to do with the drainage. That would be something that would be an administrative function that we would review in the community development department. So I wanna make sure when you're thinking about new builds and how people may or may not feel about their impacts on the community, we're not determining whether or not new builds impact the community in terms of character and drainage. We're looking at, does this one variance request impact the community? And if you feel like having houses that are eight feet apart changes the character of the community, then, then that would be relevant, but just the fact that it's a new build is not relevant.
So we, we have to basically take those topics that we've been discussing off the table?
That would be my recommendation, that you just stick to... That would be my recommendation, that you just stick to discussion of the eight-point, whatever feet it is, because that's really what we're talking about here. We're not talking about the larger question of new builds and residential drainage and all those things.
So that kind of clarifies where you were going of, what does that really truly mean, so?
Right.
Okay.
Can I speak again? Is it, I know the public comment is closed, but.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, we.
I'm just gonna talk. I read the ordinance. I'm an attorney. In the zoning ordinance, there are criteria and facts need to be found. I get what, what she's saying, and I don't disagree with it. But it's explicit, you should know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we, we, so we, we have those in front of us, and we, we, we base.
That's my concern, because the language is in there.
Yes, no, and we, and, and our whole job is not to look at something from an aesthetic viewpoint, but to make sure it stands up to those five criteria, and it's, it's either yes, it does, or no, it doesn't. And it has to meet all five in order for us to, to say yes. And there's many times where things have come in front of us and they may look great, or it, for whatever reason, we may think it's a good idea, but if it doesn't meet those criteria and we, we really truly stick to those, we can either, you know, approve or deny. So I appreciate that thought.
Maybe we should, can we go through each
Absolutely.
a specific one and just, uh, see how they play out?
Yep, so the first one is the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. So we need to determine if the variance is due to unique, their, their request meets that unique circumstance or physical condition of the property. Thoughts?
Absolutely, it does.
We all agree.
I'll agree on that.
Okay, given that it's originally undeveloped pl- platted lot, there, it was never split, built in nineteen thirty-four. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners.
That's iffy.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, it's not, but it's not, the pro- it, the property owners didn't have anything to do, this is the way it was originally plotted, so they, the people who live there, who have lived there had nothing to do with that unless they planted it and then bought the house, which we don't even know what happened there. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unnecessarily, unreasonably, I'm sorry, prevent the property owners from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome.
I agree with that. I think that would.
It will unreasonably prevent the property from using it for permitted purpose. I mean, outside of the purpose of selling and building a new house on it, what else are they preventing from doing?
Permitted purpose of a, of a permit, like to permitted, to put a house there.
I guess, I guess how I sometimes look at this as well is if we were to say no, can they not, can, does that property still exist in the way it functions today?
It does.
Yeah, I mean, if you say it like that.
It would always remain an undeveloped parcel.
I mean, the, the example was when Five Credit Union came in front of us and they wanted to redesign their parking lot. I mean, I understood it was an aesthetic thing, but I will still be able to go to the ATM tomorrow when we said no, just because of the way that it was, was presented.
Well, that might hold true for any, anything, that, that, anything.
Well, that, that typically becomes one of our sticking points.
Because anything could be continued if it's being used already for whatever it's being used for, and you don't change it, then it still can be used for nothing. It's being, basically being used for nothing, so it can continue to be used for nothing.
I think the one sticking point on this is the fact that this lot isn't being split. It's, it's, you know, it was planted this way, it's.
Okay. The request for the variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the property owners.
I'd say that's a no.
Other property owners.
I'd say that's a no, because the house could be made smaller.
Like fourteen feet wide?
If it was sixteen, we'd calculate it, yeah.
They could go, you know, twenty feet wide and ask for a smaller variance.
So if we have determined that, um, there i- there are other ways to construct a home on this property.
So at what point do you, but, yeah, I, but I get what you're saying. You could just ask for smaller variance, but at what point, what is, at what point is it acceptable for you? Like, at what point, at what dimension, like, how is that even? So eight, eight is no good, but like six would be okay, or five or four, like, it's, you know, like, where do you draw the line?
I think half the required setback is an excessive amount, in my mind.
So you're, when they're meeting that fifty percent? I guess, I, I don't know that we would change, I don't know that my decision would change whether it was eight feet or one foot. I mean, that's sometimes what we have to consider. We have had inches come in front of us, I think, or feet.
So, going back to the other one, we're saying you, if strict compliance with the ordinance would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for the permitted purpose, which is building a, a house on it. So if we strictly if we don't, it would unreasonably prevent that from be, from happening. You have this plot, you have this lot. The city has designated it being an actual lot. If we say no to this, their only alternative would be to come back with a significantly smaller house if they wanted to keep.
Well, no, they could sell, they could sell their property and the other lot, and they could, and then we acknowledge that we don't really have much authority at that point to do anything about it, but I, I have, I push back on the notion that conformity to the existing regulations, uh, if we go that route, is unnecessarily burdensome to people that have lived in that property for nine years and have let this lot remain vacant. I, I don't agree with that.
I do think it's unreasonable, though, to say you have to sell the, you have to sell, you have to tear your house down in order to make the second lot. Um, workable, workable, yeah.
It was designed by the city to have a house there, just no, nobody, obviously, nobody built a house in forever, obviously, but.
Maybe because it floods. I, I don't know. That is odd to me, too, that it's been ninety years almost since the, uh, original non-conformity, and there's been no attempt, as far as we can tell, to, to build on that lot.
Say that almost every time one of them comes up.
Flooding is, is not, I guess, something worth thinking about, but it could be flooding because people built houses on the other side, and now it's a low spot, so now you bought a house there, it might help the flooding, you know, it, it, but I guess it's neither here nor there, that's irrelevant to the.
So I guess m- my question is, would strict compliance to it, so we say no, you can't have, you can't have the variance that basically makes that lot that is designated as a lot, a pro- a section, a separate lot, it makes it unusable for anything else.
But, I guess, yeah, I mean, it's a lot, so it, it's still usable as a lot, whether, whether you could put, what you can put on that lot, yeah.
Smaller.
It's, is.
Tiny home?
Mm-hmm.
Little home, would, yeah, would.
That doesn't look like the rest of the.
We have footset, uh, you have footprint setback requirements that you have to meet, too.
So it looks like we, we, we have some discussion around those two points. Let's go to the fifth one. The requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. So once again, we, we can't speculate as to whether there'll be flooding or, or what would happen, but, um, does it have a negative impact on, on the people that live on that street in that, that area? And would our decision have an impact, you know, to the, to the larger community as, as Kristen talked about with us?
We have testimony of two property owners that says so, and we have nothing to the contrary. So I, I mean, I haven't even made an ar- I heard an argument by the, the home builder that they wouldn't cause a burden. So, I mean, at some point we have to consider that, don't we? Flooding aside?
And we're not allowed to speak in, all right?
Correct. Thoughts on this point?
Maybe, what, what is the burden? Like, what, it?
I'm not so stuck on this one because, I mean, there, there, this already exists.
Right.
So we're not, so by making this decision, we're not setting a precedent. It's, it, I, you're, you're just gonna live close to your neighbor. I mean, that's the bottom line of what this is. If we can't speculate on what may, or what could, or what has happened and will continue to happen, um, if those things are off the table and we truly look at it, uh, for the impact and what it would do, I think it's hard to say, you know, that, um, that it would. I mean, I, I understand what everyone is saying, I understand those things, but if you take that off the table, Mr. Allen?
Your, uh, city attorney, I'm sure, would be more than happy to tell you that that, um, the, our ZBA rulings are about the only place where you're not setting a standard.
Because we, uh, each case is just.
All unique.
Right, we're not supposed to even consider previous cases when we consider this. This case is unique in a, in a, in and of itself, but, yeah.
But in the bigger.
There are current homes in the community that are definitely less than fifteen feet apart.
But it is not as if this is some kind of use that's gonna change everything. I mean, it's, it's a house in a neighborhood.
I can see either way, um, the variance adversely or not adversely impacting the surrounding properties. I don't really like the fact that it's so close to the other house, you know, and I, I think that is a negative impact, but I don't know that that's enough to keep it from being approved.
And, and I would say that, that whoever would buy this house has the choice of living that close to someone.
Right.
Exactly.
I mean, they, they have the, you, you can say, no, I don't wanna live that clo- that's too close to me.
With your wallet.
True.
So then we go back to, uh, the third criteria, which is strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owners from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. To me, that's the toughest one.
It is, but if you go down to the non-italic, it's, is, that without a variance, the parcel cannot be developed. It's incorrect. It can be developed. It cannot be developed to the dimensions that are here, but it can be developed.
Which speaks to four as well. I mean, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant and homeowners.
Substantial justice, yeah.
It's just not.
Substantially, leaving, you're not gonna live in a fourteen-foot wide house.
Again, if someone wants to buy it, I mean.
There's a home on, um, the corner of Kipling and Edwards, I believe, that came to us for a variance that we turned down, and at that point, the builder said, there's just no way I could sell a house under twenty-four feet, and he put up a house that was nineteen feet or twenty feet wide, and that thing sold like that for top dollar.
There's a lot of depths, I mean, there's a lot of depth here. You could, you could build it back further, you know, there's, this is not.
Shotgun house.
So, I mean, given, given what we're discussing, I'm just gonna try to wrap it up some, um, there are, we're, we're talking options, whether or not there, what uh, the builder would like to do, or what, you know, i- if there are people that can do that, then we te- we technically, um, should not be approving this variance because there's other options for this particular property, while we may not agree with them, and we may think it that, that what they can do is very limited. There are options.
We have the opportunity to set this aside if the builder and the future homeowner are, are willing to look at doing this a different way. We can set it aside.
Absolutely, yes, you can.
Is there, is there a perspec- I know that there's a builder, but is they billing us as like a spec house to sell, or are they, or do we know if it's?
Sold.
Sold.
So you guys sold the property, planned the house, but didn't have the variance?
We, the, the offer is contingent.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I, okay.
Yeah, the offer's contingent on approval today.
And if we deny what happens, then the offer goes off the table?
I will, excuse me, I will make a motion.
Okay, Ms. there.
At that point. Um, in the matter of PBA zero eight two-three, parcel twenty-five dash seventeen dash four seventy-eight dash zero two-nine, motion to deny the requested variances from the section one thirty-eight dash five twenty-six of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to permit a variance of eight point oh-three feet at the west side yard where fifteen feet between dwellings is required. That does not conform to the applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is not due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The need for the variance is the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will not unnecessary, oops, I'm sorry, unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will not render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Uh, the re- requested variance is not the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners, and the requested variance will adversely impact the surrounding properties.
So we have a motion on the table, and just to clarify, because we have to either say yes or no to all five criteria, and some of those that you read, um, we do believe that it is unique circumstances, and there are some things that um, don't fall, and it is not a unanimous decision that all five criteria have been met in order to approve the variance, correct? Because we talked about one and two being fine, and I'm just saying, I, yes, yes.
If we can't vote yes to all five, yeah.
Okay, do we have a support for the motion?
Support.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Member Creel?
Deny.
Deny.
Yeah.
Yes, to deny.
Yep.
Um, Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
No.
Member Allen?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine? Yes. Unfortunately, your, uh, request for the dimensional variance has been denied. Okay, so at this point, next up on, um, our agenda is other business. Um, included in our packet was the twenty twenty-four proposed, um, s- meeting schedule. And if everyone can make note of that and make sure that the, um, these dates all work and you have them in your calendar, um, that would be great. And just remember as well, um, we do require attendance or at least advance notice, um, if you are unable to attend the meeting. Are there any questions about the dates? Okay, then moving on, um, we, next up would be the staff and the board member report.
Chair, um, a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion to approve our twenty twenty-four meeting schedule?
Yes, please.
We can do an all-call vote for that? All in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule has been set.
Okay, now, Allen did the motion, who supported it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Krug.
Okay, thank you.
And just to, um, just to note that our first meeting in January, um, uh, is moved to Tuesday instead of a Monday, and then the same goes for November twelfth. Um, first one is due to the city council schedule, and the second one is due to Veterans Day. Um, next up, are there any other, uh, reports from staff for the, for us?
Um, well, everything was in your report, um, in your packets. There's the community development monthly report for August, September, and October, twenty twenty-three. The annual report for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And then there was, uh, the zoning ordinance steering committee, um, just, uh, updates on where we're, where we've been for September, October, and November, as far as what we've been covering. There again, as far as everything on the steering committee, all that is on the website in regards to, um, you know, looking at everything that we're doing and looking over. All that's available.
Okay, um, Mr. Henan, Councilman Henan, do you have anything to report as the liaison?
I don't have anything to add.
All right.
Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, are there any more public comments, or anyone who would like to come forward and speak at this part, portion of the meeting?
Just ask a question?
But I guess you can make a comment, sure.
The gentleman on the end had mentioned.
If you can come back up, sorry, we just need to make sure we have it all appropriate recorded in the record.
You had mentioned, Mr. Allen.
Can you do your name and address again?
Um, Bathryum eighteen twenty-nine Glenwood, Royal Oak. Um, you had mentioned that if we reduce the size, that we could, it would be set aside without having to come back again? Like, at what, what is the dimension that, that would happen?
No, I, I didn't say that.
Oh, well, maybe I misunderstood.
What I said was that What I said was that if we could get a motion up on the table and you guys would agree to take a look at the dimensions that are there, and whether you could build or not on the lot without getting the variance, then that's an opportunity. Unfortunately, nobody grabbed the opportunity.
Okay. I've never been here, so I don't know what I'm.
It's okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, I will officially adjourn the meet. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty. Um, can I have a motion in a second, please?
A motion second.
All in favor to join, adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.